Okay, it's five thirty. I will call to order the West Fargo Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for today, May tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Second order of business is the approval of the minutes from our meeting on April eleventh.
So move.
And do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, it's moved and seconded and approved as published. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved. Number three, it's a public hearing, A twenty-two dash ten, conditional use permit to allow for illuminated signs facing residential districts as per section four dash four sixty point seven point fourteen of the general sign provisions located at thirty-nine oh one through thirty-nine ninety-seven, Fourth Street East, lots one, nine to ten, seventeen seventeen to twenty-two, block one of Westfield, Fourth Edition City, West Fargo, North Dakota, Fourth Avenue Association.
Thank you. This application was received in order to allow for illuminated signs facing residential districts in a commercial office park development. Under section four dash four six zero point seven point fourteen, under the general sign provisions, signs in residential districts and signs facing residential districts shall not be illuminated unless approved by a conditional use permit. Similar application was approved for an eighty-five square foot monument sign for the townhouses of Charles Wood Development Sign along Nineteenth Avenue East facing the Huntington Woods Development to the north. Signage was designed so LED lighting was directed down toward the letters and not to cause adverse effects such as glare or traffic safety problems. Other signs conditionally permitted previously included electronic message centers for Lutheran Church of the Cross, Motor Ridge Bible Chapel, Triumph West Church, as well as the Halbert Arena, with conditions that included limiting the hours of operation of the electronic message center from six to ten P M. Less than half of a mile east, there's a strip mall in the city of Fargo with no conditions relating to lighted signage facing residential areas to the south. There is also an electronic message center with off-premise signage for the Cheyenne High School, which was permitted as a conditional use permit in two thousand and thirteen. Under the criteria for granting a conditional use permit, illuminated signage as regulated by the sign code is summarized in the staff report in the discussion section. As with sign examples mentioned, conditions for new signage could include hours of operation, time of day illumination to ensure intensity of the lighting is reduced during dark, foot candles not to exceed a certain standard, industry standards in terms of LED lighting, et cetera, et cetera. Notices were sent to property owners within three hundred and fifty feet, not counting streets and applicable departments and agencies. An email was received and is attached to your staff report from a property owner along the south side of Fortieth Avenue East who is opposed to illuminated signage and indicated there should be certain standards regarding size, color, and position of signage. An email with photos was also received from a property owner along the south side of Fortieth Avenue who is against the installation of illuminated and non-illuminated signs facing residential areas. Another was received today, also opposed to or at least wants regulations regarding how late the lighted sign could stay on. Emails were received today west of Fourth Street East in the Reserve at Osgood Development with concerns regarding lights, light pollution, signage distracting drivers along Fortieth Avenue and Fourth Street, and opposed to any illuminated signage. These were emailed to you all and are provided in front of you tonight and are a matter of part of the record. In terms of consistency with the comprehensive plan and other applicable plans and ordinances, the signs are accessory to the surrounding buildings and appear to be appropriately sized for the area. If it is found through deliberation by the commission that the proposal will not generate a nuisance to adjacent property owners and the general public, it is recommended the city approve the proposed application on the basis it is consistent with city plans and ordinances with recommended conditions of approval as follows. Consideration be given to any public comments that may be received. Signage follow the commercial office park district standards and a signed conditional use permit agreement which outlines these details or any additional conditions by the Planning and Zoning Commission is received. This is a public hearing. I'm available to answer any questions, as is the applicant.
Thank you. Before we go into the comment section, I just want to ask a couple of questions, if I may. I noticed the one sign is lit.
So during initial conversations with the sign company and the developers representative during permitting, the process, or they indicated that the sign was going to be non-illuminated. And I'm not sure if it was a miscommunication regarding the commercial office park sign regulations, which if it's not facing a residential area, you can have lighting, or if it had, I don't know what happened, but the sign was permitted.
Okay, thank you. So it is a sign which currently is not permitted, but was built.
So it was issued a building permit.
It was issued.
It was issued a building permit. It did not go through the conditional use permit process when they applied.
When it was permitted, was it listed as non-illuminated or illuminated?
With, there were a number of emails that went back and forth and conversations with the sign company, and they had indicated it was going to be a twenty-square-foot non-illuminated sign. And apparently when they applied for the permit, the sketches showed LED lighting.
This is a conditional, this is a planned unit development during that period when we approved the P U D as a business condo park. Did we also include the sign standards that were going to be allowed?
So it talked about the signs needed to follow the commercial office park district regulations, which in that case, eighty, no max, no more than eighty square foot of signage per building was allowed.
Is that what we put on this specific P U D?
So with the P U D, let's see, what was the wording?
I thought I remember we talked about something regarding.
We talked about lighting.
Streetlights.
We talked about street lighting maximums to be provided in the district standards, and that was twenty-five candle feet. And then the second recommendation was that the signage reflect the office park standards for lighting.
Which are?
Which are, let me see here.
Sorry if I'm getting caught up here.
No, that's okay. Within the commercial office park district, while signage for each lot is limited to eight square feet in size, signs may be illuminated by external floodlights or internally. No flashing, blinking, motion lighting, or any kind is permissible. So, under the, so under the commercial office park district regulations, which talks about the uses and parking, and it includes a section of the signage that if it was a commercial office park, it could have lighting. There is a separate section in the sign code under general provisions that talks about signs in residential districts and facing residential districts shall not be illuminated unless approved as a conditional use. So that's where the confusion is.
Yeah, I'm actually, I just want to make sure I'm clear here. Eric just handed me the regulation on sign requirements, which I believe is what we referenced when we did the P U D initially. This four dash four-two-seven dash eight point three, right? So, because we referenced those requirements in the P U D when it was originally approved. And in there, sign requirements, sign construction and illumination may be illuminated by external floodlights or internally. No flashing or blinking or motion lighting. So is that currently in?
So, so for the P U D, the, the commercial office park sign standards are in place, but there is a separate section in the ordinance, it's the sign ordinance itself.
When facing residential.
Right. So, Halbert Arena, when they approved the sign over there on Seventh Avenue, they had to apply for a conditional use permit because of exterior lighting. There's a development sign that I mentioned before on Nineteenth Avenue East that they applied for a conditional use permit for a development sign because it faces the, the backyards of the Huntington Woods Development.
Right, those are other areas. So I'm just trying to get back to what we had originally done in this one, when, I forget how long ago it was. It was a year and a half or something like that.
So the request before you tonight is requesting that they have illuminated signs facing a residential area.
Okay, which currently is not allowed without.
A conditional use.
Conditional use permit for this specific planned unit development.
And any, right, any of the lots facing the residential areas, the Fourth Street and Fortieth Avenue.
Okay.
Can I ask a clarifying question too, or do you want me to wait till after?
Well, I'm gonna open it up for comment, and this will be a fun one, I could tell already.
But if I could just ask you, Lisa, the, the, the business that already has the, the lighted sign then did not ask for a conditional use permit from us.
Correct.
Correct? And does it, as a, I guess a retail food and beverage, beverage business, really qualify under the four, four-two-seven A co-op district or commercial office park district permitted uses? Does it not require a commercial permitted use even to function as that kind of a business in that area under that?
I believe it's similar to some of the other commercial office parks that, that we've done, the Oak Ridge ones. I guess I.
I, I don't see it permitted in the ordinance. So it's not clear to me that the current business with a lighted sign even fits under the ordinance as a business permitted there, let alone the lighted sign.
I'm not exactly sure. I know that we had the district standards and it was similar to the other.
Well, I, I'm looking at the ordinance right here. Commercial and professional office buildings. Is, is that considered a office building?
Well, it's a P U D, so there were different uses that were allowed in there. But again, the question before us tonight is the signage. So, so what's there now, the buildings, that's not under review this evening. What's under review this evening is the signage, whether we allow lighted signage facing residential districts.
Got it.
Just add, staff can look into that question, but.
I'm sorry, I couldn't, can't understand you.
We can look into that question in terms of the use, but as Lisa mentioned, that's, the question before us tonight is in regards to the signage, and so if we could stick to that question.
I appreciate that. It does seem that, that we have an issue going back before the signage. If somebody's gonna use a sign and they really even shouldn't be a business within it, then that puts their business, their sign into question. And a sign that's already there, which is not before us for a, an application for, for conditional use, already has a sign. So I think it's complicated, and I appreciate that you're trying to redirect me away from those questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. This is a public hearing, therefore I am going to open up to public comment at this time. You're welcome to come up, a couple of things. I ask that you come up to the podium, direct your conversation to the commission, and also start out with your name and your address so we can keep it on record. I believe commissioners here have all read the comments which were submitted by, I'm assuming, several of the folks which have joined us, as well as referenced some of the other neighbors, which have expressed concern with the application. So with that, I'll open it up for public comment.
Hi, Cindy Sepulveda, six-two, Sepulveda, S E P U L V, like Victor, E D A, six-two-eight-seven Osgood Parkway, and that's Fargo. We are, the back of our house is Fortieth, so all of these businesses are behind us, if you will.
Okay, and help me with the board, so all the folks on the other side of the street are Fargo, not West Fargo?
Yes.
Really? Didn't even know that. Okay.
Yeah, so during the original meetings, and you asked questions that were actually related, so way back when the developer wanted to change it from the original use into commercial or convenience commercial, there was a joint session between Fargo and West Fargo in that discussion. And at that time, one of, we were there, and we did express our concerns, as one of our concerns, that if we said, sure, okay, fine, you know, these, these commercial little condos, if you will, is that they have no illuminated signs. We actually expressed it at that point because of the concern that they could be quite bright, and anything that is backing up to Fortieth, all of that lighting comes into basically all of our houses, which has bedrooms on that side. So, you know, our concern about having, and, and listening to some of the standards on which you were talking, different hours and stuff, while that sounds nice, we also don't necessarily live particularly far away from the, what is that place, the lights or whatever, they're really obnoxious. And we can see that lighting from our house, and there's a lot of houses and trees and everything in between. So obviously that comes up to concern, but by putting illuminated lighting onto these businesses, it starts pulling away from that whole concept that these are supposed to be like little houses, even though they're businesses, they were supposed to blend in, and people don't put illuminated signs on their houses. That's my concern. I am, in case I didn't say it right off the bat, I'm against having illuminated signs on there. Right now, there are two of the businesses that are occupied that do have signs on the backside of their business. They're not illuminated. You can see them quite clearly, whether you're driving along the street, looking out. But example, we had some relatives come in from California, and as we were driving down Fortieth, they immediately pointed out, one of them, they said, oh, what is that business? And they were talking about the juice box. I said, oh, it's, you know, fresh pressed juices and smoothies and stuff like that. They had no problem catching the sign and seeing it. So having a illuminated sign of any manner, I don't see ads benefit, but is more of a detraction. So, okay?
Thank you, ma'am. Come on up.
My name is Joseph Sepulveda, and I'm her husband at six-two-eight-seven Osgood Parkway. And I, I don't mean any disrespect, but in reference to a comment that you made when she questioned about the particular business, the juice bar business, whether it's one of the type businesses that was originally planned to be there, and you said, that's not necessarily what's before this committee. You know, it, it kind of reminds me the expression about it's better to ask for forgiveness than to ask for permission, because if we kept, if we keep letting these things occur, and then later try to go back and, and change it, it's too late. And I don't like the illuminated signs, just like my wife and just like most of the people living on Osgood, whose back of the house faces these businesses. At nighttime, we really can't open up our shades and enjoy, especially in the summertime, now that we're finally getting some, and enjoy some of the, the weather because of all the light in the back. If we wanted to sit in our back porch, who wants to sit in the back porch and stare at all these lights and these businesses? Other cities, if you're gonna be even going that direction, other cities, sometimes they have standards where the signs will all be consistent or uniform. This isn't going that direction even now. The, the juice business has one big massive sign. They have flags that they put up on the grass, flapping away in the wind. Another business put up a sign, although not illuminated. And what's the next business gonna do? And whatever they do, is it gonna be too late to go back and change them? Because, well, that's not before this committee. You gotta have standards, and they gotta be followed. And I don't see that happening right now. That's what really concerns me right now, is people are just taking off, they're gonna put up whatever they want to put up, and it's not gonna be consistent with what was talked about originally. I'm against the illuminated signs, period. I really would have preferred no businesses there at all, but if you're gonna have businesses, at least make it to where they have consistent, uniform signs and non-illuminated. It's my concern.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
Hello, Sarah West, address is twenty-three eighteen Thirty-Ninth Street in South Morehead, representing the Fortieth Avenue condo association. So, the one thing that we did want to bring up is that those residents who are in the city of Fargo, it's actually allowed in the city of Fargo to have illuminated, illuminated signs facing residential districts. So we do have a difference in the city ordinances from across the street to here. So if they were to live in other parts of the city of Fargo, they would be dealing with this. So the exception is here with a joint road of those. What we, so when we submitted the application, we just left it broad with illuminated signs. A fair compromise would be having certain hours that these would be timed off of. As we know, in this time of year, the sun rises today at six A M. and will set just before nine P M. So there's already lighting going on naturally. So we just, whatever that compromise is, if it's ten P M. to six A M., those lights are not illuminated. We are willing to compromise with that, too. I also have two of the property owners here with me today. So Landon's Light is represented here today, as well as Premier Wealth Management, if you'd like to hear from them.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Nathan Anderson. I'm a partner at Prairie Wood Wealth Management. We recently moved from our office location in Fargo to West Fargo, into this office park at Fortieth Avenue and Fourth Street. Our specific address is thirty-nine eighty-one within the office park. You know, obviously, one of the reasons that we found this location attractive was the access to Fortieth Avenue, as well as Fourth Street, and the amount of traffic that drives by and the visibility for our business. You know, we certainly have no interest in, you know, creating a distraction to the, the people who live across, across the street. You know, if you look at Fortieth Avenue itself, there's already significant street lighting there. There's headlights, taillights, cars that go by consistently throughout the day and evening. You know, all we really want is a sign that, you know, especially in the winter, from, you know, four-thirty at night till, you know, ten o'clock or so, when there is prime traffic hours, people to be able to see that our business is there, that we're open for business. If we have clients that come in later in the evening, five o'clock during the winter, they're able to find our, our office more easily. You know, we're not looking or wanting to add any type of sign that is going to elevate the lighting level that's already there. And so we're obviously in favor of illuminated signage, and are just asking that you would approve the conditional use permit.
Hello, I'm Travis Solberg. I'm from Landon's Light Foundation. This is Mary Ellen Rolson.
I'm the executive director for the foundation.
And my address, twenty-eight oh nine Pile Lane East in West Fargo, North Dakota. And I think for us, as we, we looked at a space for, this is our first building, we're just a couple, we're a new foundation. When we're looking at a spot to go, it ended up being a beautiful location, great spot, and I think traffic area is a big piece of it and awareness. And I think that's the reason why we went there. If we went there and knew that we could not have signage there to spread the word that that's where we're at and try to invite people in and make, raise awareness, I think that's a big part of why we made the purchase of that location. There's obviously lots of property throughout the, throughout the area, the city, and the, the, the whole area that we could have went to, but I think this allows us, great location, Fortieth Avenue, Fourth Street, there's a lot of traffic, and I think that's the reason why. And for us, we don't need the nighttime traffic, the awareness, I think. I think a good compromise is that, that timing, because we really don't need our lights on past ten o'clock, you know, for us, or early in the morning. The people that we want to touch are, you know, we're primarily focused on helping children in the community, and I think bringing awareness to families as they're going home, especially at night. I think Nathan had mentioned it too, but just so they can see that when it's five o'clock in the evening or six o'clock when they're going home and spreading that awareness, so.
Our building address is thirty-nine forty-one. So our back side is on Fourth Street versus Fortieth. So, you know, we believe that we, we're not trying to be a distraction, but we are trying to raise awareness for our foundation, of course. So a good compromise would be, like Travis and Nate said, you know, to, to turn those off maybe at ten P M. And we're a community organization. We love this community, so we don't want to cause any challenges for those around us. And when you look at the development, it doesn't look like a typical office park. You know, we're good neighbors, I would say. When you, you know, we're there eight to five primarily, not a lot of traffic, really, you know, good businesses. They, they look nice, they do blend in. So it's not like a strip mall across from the neighborhood. So I would say we have some positive things going for the, the condo park ourselves and the people in there. Of course, we're biased, of course, but really good businesses and people that are in there, you know, just trying to do good work in the community. So we would be for illuminated signs. And when we bought the building, that's how it was presented to us. So I feel like there is, is a miscommunication somewhere between the developer and the city and the ordinance, so somewhere along the line, that wasn't clearly stated, because we were told when we bought the building that we could have illuminated signs. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other comment from the public? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Mike will.
In the industry and I'm affiliated with the industry, and I, I don't think it'd be appropriate to make a decision when we're.
Now, the unfortunate part of that is that we no longer have a quorum. Right? Or do I only need three? Aaron?
Well, if it's, so I'm gonna get really technical here. From a purely legal standpoint, if you have a pure legal conflict, so if you had a contract with the company, then the vote isn't counted, so you would reduce your quorum. In the situation, which you're recusing yourself because of your participation in the industry, you're still counted as part of the quorum, so.
But he's done business with that specific company.
We, we didn't do the illuminated sign, but we've done other signage on that building. And I, I don't think it'd be appropriate to vote one way or the other.
Okay.
Related to this matter.
All right, so that changes a little bit, so that, then you actually take Commissioner Thorsted completely out of the calculation.
You're out of here.
And so you do have a quorum because you, you don't even count that member as part of, like, the, the board, because it's a true conflict.
Okay, so the three of us will be sufficient to.
Correct.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, now we got that all cleared up. Interesting. We do have other locations where we have had similar challenges. I think I remember the Triumph Church being one of them, and we put the timed requirement there.
Could I just refer us again to the ordinance for four-two-seven A co-op district or commercial office park district source about, about signage, because we're hearing that the signs are an important way of getting the word out about one's business. And yet, in the statement of intent, it actually reads, "It is the intent of this district that building, architecture, and site development provide the primary means of exposure and communication, and that reliance on signs is minimized. Businesses which require more signage or building construction which is out of character with the district are not appropriate." So I think that's a good establishing point, that the district itself is not intended to be a place for businesses in which there is a need for a great deal of signage and promotion of that business. That's, that's not the intent. So I think that's, that's an important thing to keep in mind. I would also, you know, go back to our original discussion about this, where I left a meeting where we voted on this, and I really thought that we had minimized signage, even to the point of no illumination. My bad, apparently, that I was not careful enough to really look at those requirements. I think that Mr. Solberg at the time also agreed with me that that's what we were accomplishing and. and apparently that's not what ends up in the minutes. And again, my bad that I did not attend to those details. I think that we have a disappointing outcome of that PUD at that location. I think we could have done better for that neighborhood. The height of the buildings, the, the look of the buildings, the fact that on 40th, we're looking at the backs of those white buildings is a disappointment, that we could have done better for that neighborhood. It is, in some ways, a poor fit with a residential neighborhood. We've had, we've heard the concerns expressed about the problem. I think we also may be seeing that we have this limitation of our 350 feet not being a sufficient way of gathering opinions from people in a neighborhood who are much impacted by what happens at a location like this, which affects far beyond people right in the immediate area. So that is on us as a commission to go back to this. And we've talked about reviewing the footage that we look at for who is notified and, and who can participate and really have input into the appropriateness of these changes. We hear from the staff that if we feel this will generate a nuisance, we do not have to approve this. I think, though, that illuminated signs, based on what we've heard from neighbors, constitutes a nuisance to them and detracts from the neighborhood. And I would suggest that we not approve this. If we end up with signs, illuminated signs, on the backs of every one of those buildings, we are going to have quite a garish lot there that, again, does not do a service to that area of our community. Thank you.
Is that a motion?
I move, we deny.
It's up to you, Eric. Are you going to second that?
I'm not sure I'm ready to approve or not approve that motion yet, I guess. I know there's another office park up by Cashwise, just off of 30 Second. Maybe just out of curiosity's sake, what is the sign situation in that area? Do we know?
So the sign, this allowable sign is based on front footage. So if the front footage is 120 feet wide, it can have its times two, so they could have 240 square feet of signage.
On the illumination part, that's also a PUD that we did over there, off 30 Second. I think it's Sixth Avenue. It's all condos as well.
So the, the office condos, I don't believe any of those face a residential area or the signage. I don't know if it was addressed in, in that, but.
I drove through there yesterday, and I didn't see any lit signs, but I, you know, it was during the day, so I.
And I don't know off the top of my head what all was approved, whether they were illuminated or non-illuminated. That's in a predominantly commercial area.
Is that referred to as the Oak Ridge condos?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Well, I guess, you know, we have an interesting situation here. And I recall when we considered this PUD a year and a half ago. I recall we had the discussion about the streetlights. I recall some brief discussion about the actual signage for buildings.
Yeah, we did spec lights which shone down.
Correct, for the streetlights, correct. And I guess frankly, I was surprised to see that the juice box sign is illuminated. I, I felt like that was inconsistent with our expectations or with my expectations. Can't speak for everybody, but. And I, I guess I hear the businesses clearly, and I understand your interest in having illuminated signs, especially when it's, you know, pitch dark at 4:30 in the wintertime. I understand that makes a lot of sense. So we have a dilemma here. I understand the suggestions of, you know, maybe coming to a compromise, which probably normally would make good sense of trying to come to a compromise. But all that being said, I guess I reflect back on our original approval of this. And again, in my recollection, the intention was these for be office condos, much like the Oak, sorry, what's it called again? Oak Ridge condos, which my understanding is there's not illuminated signs there. I know that they're not facing a residential area. But that was the model that we were following. In fact, the application for the PUD for this office park refers to the Oak Ridge as kind of a model that we were trying to follow. And so I guess with all that being said, and given the feedback we've received from property owners, I would support your motion to deny this.
Is that a second?
Yes.
It has been moved and seconded to decline the application. Any further discussion? All those in favor of declining the application, say aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign, aye. That would be me. Majority carries. Right? Okay, the motion is declined. Or the application is declined. Okay. Agenda item number four, it's a public hearing. A 22-11, Poplar River, First Edition, a re-plot and planned unit development amendment for proposed office building at 105 13th Avenue East, Lot 1, Block 2 of Oak Haven Edition, City of West Fargo, North Dakota, cap.
Good evening. So in 2005, there was a PUD amendment for this particular property, which was approved by the West Fargo Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as by the City Commission. The PUD amendment allowed for a deviation from multiple family residential zoning at the time for the development of a dental office, with the understanding that the south side of the plot would later be developed with a, as a professional office space. According to the 2005 PUD, a PUD amendment would be needed at the time that the south side of the property was going to be developed. Since then, we have received an application with a preliminary plat and site plan for a 10,300, 300 square foot professional office building, which would house a medical office and additional office tenant space on the south side of the property. For tax purposes, the applicant is also wanting to replat the property into two lots instead of one lot, with one lot containing the existing development and the second lot containing the proposed development. The proposed site appears to meet parking requirements of the city. The proposed site would also have shared access with the pre-existing development, as well as a new access via 14th Avenue East. A detailed landscaping plan has been submitted, showing an extension of the existing 24-inch tall landscaping berm along 1st Street. The landscaping plan also shows the addition of shrubs and trees to the new site. The site appears to meet landscaping standards for the corridor overlay district in which the site is located. The 2005 PUD amendment called for parking lot lighting to be, quote, "low-intensity lighting" and directed away from residential areas. The 2005 PUD amendment also called for business signage to, quote, "include wall and monument types of signs only" and follow the corridor overlay district regulations. Property owners within 150 feet, including applicable agencies and departments, were notified. As far as consistency with the comprehensive plan goes, the underlying land use classification for this property is suburban growth sector. Maintaining compatibility with surrounding uses would provide consistency with city plans and ordinances. Increasing employment opportunities within this district is also considered, or considered consistent with the comprehensive plan. It is recommended that the city approve the proposed application on the basis that is consistent with city plans and ordinances, with recommended conditions of approval as follows. One, that development Lot 2, Block 1 will be subject, but not limited to, the corridor overlay district standards, the supplementary district regulations, the landscaping standards, off-street parking and loading requirements, and 4-460 sign regulations. In addition to following the sign regulations, any signage should also either be a wall or monument-type signs. Any additional lighting proposed for parking should be low-intensity lighting and directed away from residential areas. Assigned PUD agreement is received, an attorney title opinion is received, an updated drainage plan is received and approved by the city engineer. Assigned final plat is received with any necessary easements, and a certificate is received showing taxes are current. This is a public hearing, and I am also available in case you have any questions for me and then the developers here as well.
Thank you, Malika. All right, so it is public hearing. I'll open up for public comment. Any public comment? Seeing none, close that. Commissions. So we're splitting a lot, so that they can develop and have two different owners.
Correct, and there, there would be a new building as well, office building and professional medical office-type building.
And for clarification, the landscape requirements, because the backside is too residential, that buffer is different than other buffer requirements, right?
So because it's a PUD, the buffering can be, there can be additional buffering, depending on commission approval. But this, so the residential area over here, that's also considered a PUD. So it's a PUD next to, two, two PUDs next to each other.
Okay. So it's not the same as when it's zoned, like, commercial next to residential?
Correct, there's a different, so if there's like a, a PUD that's up against like an R-1 or R-2, some sort of residential zoning type, then there's an additional buffering, which is considered, there's a chart within the ordinance which we use for that.
And for clarification, notifications were sent out and no comments received?
Uh, correct.
You're in on this time, right? All right. Good. Any questions?
Just maybe a question, so we just got done talking signage. Tell me, what are the signage restrictions on this location?
Good point.
So I might defer that to Lisa or Aaron.
460, is it referred to?
I believe the wording from the last application was facing a residential district.
With this particular PUD, within the PUD agreement, which at that time, PUD agreements were actually signed between property owner and the city. The PUD agreement basically boiled down to the staff report that was done at the time in 2005. Within that staff report, there were no particular mentions relating to restrictions regarding illuminated signage. The only restrictions regarding signage was having to do with it being a monument or a wall sign.
Does that answer the question?
I think so. So I mean, it refers to 460, which I've been reading through today for fun. And, yeah. I don't know, I guess to me, this seems fairly straightforward. And it's an infill project, which I think we generally support. And with that, I would move to approve with the eight recommendations noted.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the application as presented, with the eight recommendations, uh, conditions. Any other questions, comments, or discussion required before vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Thank you. Public hearing item number five. A 22-12, Wood Edition, a re-plot of Lot 3, Block 1 of Hirsch Edition, and a minor subdivision of property located at the northwest quarter of Section 29. Township 139 North, Range 49 West, 116 and 122 Golden Spike Road, City of West Fargo, North Dakota, Wood.
So staff received this application from an applicant to plat a currently unplatted piece of property that has a single-family home on it. This property is located just south of 30 Second, kind of over by the intersection of 30 Second and Cheyenne, just south of the lights area. The applicant proposes plating the existing developed lot and also adjusting lot lines. He currently also owns this house, which is over in the corner there. He'll be.
Same owner, both houses?
Yep, same owner, both, has both of the homes. So he'd basically be plotting into two lots. So one lot would be with the, with the one home, and then the other lot would be with the other home. He'd be adjusting lot lines. That way, the smaller house of the two has a slightly larger yard. He'll be renting out that particular residence. The new lots would be required to meet the current zoning district requirements. The proposed replat does not affect any public easements or right-of-ways. A hearing notice was placed in the official newspaper of record, and applicable agencies and departments were notified. The only comments that we've received to date were the ones that were handed out to you at the start of this meeting. Those comments were sent to us by Southeast Row Water Resource District today, this afternoon, actually. Apparently, they met this morning to discuss different items on their agenda, including this one, where we had asked for comments. One of their comments was they would like to see a 175-foot setback from center line for all properties located along the Cheyenne River, not just this particular property. And then they also noted that a discharge permit would be needed if any property owners along the Cheyenne would need to discharge anything with, into the Cheyenne River. Currently, the City of West Fargo requires a 100-foot setback requirement from the established riverbank. The riverbank, the established riverbank is designated by the city engineer. Aaron Nelson from our department gave the Water Resource District a call this afternoon, just to see if they, we could clarify some of their comments regarding that 175-foot setback requirement from the center line. They responded to us that they just wanted to start a discussion with the city. Apparently, there's other jurisdictions within the metro area which have differing setback requirements from the city. Some jurisdictions do from the center line, others like us do from the established riverbank. So they're just kind of looking to standardize that. So they, their response to Aaron today was that they weren't wanting any of these requirements necessarily to fit within, for this particular agenda item. They just wanted to start a discussion with the city. So we reached out to the city engineering department, and then we'll be kind of talking with engineering and then the Water Resource District, going forward to see how we address issues with, with the riverbank. But those are just some comments that we received later today, so that's why they're before you tonight. The proposed application is consistent with city plans and ordinances. The comprehensive plan includes this area in the core retrofit growth area. However, due to the proximity of the subdivision, it's not expected to be retrofitted. There's not really a whole lot of additional growth that's expected to take place within this subdivision, aside from what's already there. Staff's recommendation is that the city approve the proposed application on the basis that is consistent with city plans and ordinances, with four recommended, recommended conditions of approval, including an attorney title opinion is received, a revised drainage plan is received and approved by the city engineer, a final plat is received with any necessary easements, and tax payments are current on the property. I'm available in case you have any questions, and then the property owner is also present today as well.
Thank you. So. This is a public hearing, so with that, I'll open up to comments, questions from the public. If desired. Hi there.
Hello. My name is Harry Orinwood II. I live at 122 Golden Spike Road, the primary residence involved. Just a couple items. When we first purchased this piece of land, we dealt with, corresponded directly with Larry Wile of the planning commission at the time, or, uh, planning department, rather, excuse me. And it was unplatted, which we were aware of. And he had indicated that there was really no benefit to plating the property. That turns out to be untrue during the Cheyenne assessment project. We got assessed at a higher level because it was unplatted, and because of the square footage within the unplatted area, it could have been built into multiple properties. So it did end up affecting us, but that's not why I'm here. So it just seemed like the right time to get platted. Our neighbors sold the home to us about 18 months ago. She was retiring, and they were using the funds to build their retirement home on a lake. And so we bought it from them and then rented it back to them with the thoughts that maybe one of the. And so we bought it from them and then rented it back to them with the thoughts that maybe one of our siblings would buy the property and move in next to us. Our siblings decided they did not want to live next to us. So we currently hold the property as a rental property.
Okay.
I'm available for any questions as well.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Seeing none, close that. Questions? Now, this thing that you're mentioning regarding the one seventy-five is not, is not really affecting this because they're not building anything. This is just an improvement to the overall or, you know, uh, the different jurisdictions so that we're all on the same page when it comes to offset from the rivers.
Correct, so, you know, this is a discussion for another time, but if, for instance, our ordinance was changed to reflect a hundred and seventy-five feet from center line versus a hundred foot setback from established river, uh, the riverbank, you know, it could potentially affect this property owner in the fact of, you know, maybe the location if he was to build some sort of accessory structure like a shed or something that would come through building inspections, yep, future building.
Okay.
Currently, his house, I measured it today, it's around like two hundred feet-ish, two hundred and thirty feet from center line, yeah.
Questions?
Move to approve with the recommendations noted. If there are any issues.
Second it. It has been moved and seconded, any other questions to approve, any other questions before vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Application's approved. Thank you. Item number six, public hearing, A twenty-one dash fourteen Stockyards First Edition, a subdivision located in the northeast quarter of Section Six. Township one thirty-nine north, range forty-nine west, City of West Fargo, North Dakota, GS Five LLC.
Alright. Good afternoon. As was mentioned, this is item six, Stockyards First Edition. This is a request for a modified application for subdivision and zone change that was originally heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission in May of last year. Specifically, the applicant is before you today to request approval of a new, excuse me, preliminary plat for the Stockyards First Edition development. The subject property is located between Seventh and Twelfth Avenues Northwest and between Seventh Street Northwest and the Cheyenne River, as you can see on the screen here. The applicant, or the application is represented by Matt Prochniak with more engineering, on behalf of the property owners, some of which are here tonight as well. Should you have any questions for the applicant? Before I dive into the specific request before you today, however, I do want to provide just a quick bit of information on, in terms of the background here. So as I mentioned, this request for subdivision and zone change was originally heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission in May of two thousand and twenty-one, where the request was recommended for approval with conditions. Shortly thereafter, a public hearing and a first reading of the rezone ordinance was held and approved by the city commission in June of two thousand and twenty-one. After that, while working through some of the conditions of approval, the application essentially stalled out and the applicant has since come back in recent months with this revised plat for consideration. And so the new preliminary plat is considered a new application for subdivision and therefore requires approval of the planning, of the preliminary plat by the Planning and Zoning Commission, which is why they're here before you tonight. There is no change to the request for rezone, which was previously recommended for approval, and so that's not, you know, part of the discussion here today. The specifics of the proposed zone change would rezon the property from A agricultural to M heavy industrial, just for reference there. And so with that, you know, quick background or history on, on kind of the previous conversations on this.
So wait.
Yep.
You said it not for a rezone, so that is the plat and the rezone is what the application is?
Correct, yeah, so to, maybe just to summarize here.
Sorry, I'm a little slow.
Yep, that's right, I went fast here. The application has two components, there is a subdivision component and then the rezone component. The, both of those components were before this board previously last year. Both were recommended for approval and moved on to the city commission for their review and approval.
Okay.
The reason that they're coming back before you tonight now is strictly for the purposes of the subdivision. They're modifying their request for subdivision. And so the subdivision piece is what's before you tonight. The rezone is still hanging out and waiting for final approval by the city commission. Basically waiting for the plat to catch back up to it and to go before the city commission as one package, if you will. Hopefully that kind of makes sense. So there is still a rezone request.
Alright, alright, what is it about a subdivision that's, we're voting on then, I don't understand that?
Yep, and that's what I'll, I'll get into the details here now.
Okay.
I just wanted to provide a little bit of background.
I'll stop asking questions, I apologize.
No, I just thought I'd start with that little history on, on why this is back in front of you in case we call the conversation.
The overall plan has not changed except they want to subdivide it differently.
Except for the plat, correct, yep. And so, the, again, yep, the purpose of the subdivision application is to plat the property into three lots for future industrial development. And so you'll see the updated plat included in your packet here and it'll kind of load on the screen here. There we go. So three lots total, included in the, I think it's the last page of this application packet is the previous version of the plat, if you, if you're interested in comparing last year's version to the version in front of you here tonight. But the version in front of you here today is a request to replat the, or to plat the property into three lots. Proposed Lot One, which is on the western side of the plat here, is about sixty acres in area, is intended to be developed for industrial rental units.
Does that include that little chunk or not?
It does include this little flag-looking thing.
Okay, because the line on the other one was drawn over, alright, so.
Yep, so that is intended to be included, yes, good question. And so including your staff report as well as an attachment is a site, a proposed, you know, draft site plan for what the, the owner has in mind for how that would lay out. Bunch of individual buildings, I can scroll down that quick too maybe for, for reference here. So the site plan here shows their, their proposed layout for a series of individual buildings on private drives. The applicant has indicated to staff that their intent is to construct these buildings slowly over time and rent them out to industrial users, whether it's contractors or different things that might need some rental space in an industrial area.
So in this preliminary sketch is only regarding the first subdivision, subdivisions two and three?
Yep, so this is only showing Lot One here. Lot Two on the plat is about sixteen acres in size and is to be owned and developed by KPH Inc. A site plan was not submitted by the applicant for that lot. Proposed Lot Three, which is the southeast corner, is about five acres in size and is to be developed for use by Excavating Inc., which currently operates just adjacent to the subject property here to the southeast. We did receive one comment from Southeast Cass Water Resource District, it was essentially the same comment that was handed out for the prior item there in terms of Southeast Cass Water Resource District's desire for one hundred and seventy-five feet of setback line from both the Cheyenne River as well as the legal drain on the west side of the plat there. Again, as Malika mentioned previously, that's, that was more or less a comment for future discussion with the city on amending current setback requirements that we have in ordinance. Right now, the ordinance requires one hundred feet of setback from the, the riverbank. Access and utility servicing to the site would be provided to each of these three lots via existing public right of way adjacent to the development. Scroll back to the plat here for reference. To accommodate internal, internal circulation, the applicant is proposing to develop a system of private drives and shared access easements that would be worked out privately amongst the owners at a future date. Staff has expressed concern with the applicant's revised subdivision proposal mainly in relation to the removal of right of way connection that was previously proposed to link Seventh and Twelfth Avenues Northwest. So again, I would just call your attention to the previous version of the plat, which is the final pages of the packet here. This is what was in front of you here last year with a public right of way proposed running north-south through the development here. The city's comprehensive plan, West Fargo two point O emphasizes the importance of improved street connectivity. Also included in your staff report is a brief overview of several section of the West Fargo, several sections of the West Fargo two point O plan, which discusses this in more detail. I would highlight that in addition to some kind of more overarching policy guidance relating to connectivity, there is a specific recommendation within the comprehensive plan to improve network design, which is this, you know, sheet here, which is included in your packet. Talks about the need for adding additional transportation network connectivity for infill development and, and future development. Based on these concerns, the applicant has indicated they are willing to allow public use of the private drives that they are proposing within the development. However, the applicant does not wish to establish any public access easement on the plat because they would like to maintain essentially maximum flexibility for future site design and layout and any modifications, you know, thereto in the future. So staff does have concern with this approach because it would require an overreliance on customized and complex legal agreements in lieu of the typical public process for establishing and modifying right of way or public access easement on the plat. Overall, staff finds the applicant's proposal is not completely consistent with the West Fargo two point O comprehensive plan. Again, specifically in regards to the recommendations for improved transportation network connectivity. And because of this inconsistency with adopted development policy, staff does not recommend approval of the preliminary plat as currently proposed by the applicant. But instead, staff does recommend conditional approval with the condition that the applicant incorporates a street connection or public access easement on the plat in order to provide that connectivity between Seventh Avenue and Twelfth Avenue Northwest. Additionally included in the staff report are several other conditions that staff is recommending as outlined in the, the staff report. This includes a creation of a subdivision or development agreement that would be used to outline the details of a public street or access easement among other, you know, more standard development details. And that list of other conditions is included in your staff report, I'll scroll back for you for reference. And most of the rest are pretty typical, you know, requirements there. So with that, I'd be happy to, to answer any questions.
I do have a few questions.
Yep, a lot to this one.
Before we open it up for public. So, you said you, the staff does not recommend, we approve the preliminary layout, but does recommend we approve the subdivision?
Yeah, and to clarify the recommendation there, staff does not recommend approving the plat in its current form as the applicant is intending. But staff is comfortable with the plat under the condition that the applicant add some type of public connection between Seventh Avenue and Twelfth Avenue.
Alright, so isn't that exactly what we are, so, I'm sorry if I'm, you know, you're saying ex, your, your, the recommendation is to approve the plat, however, with an additional condition that they add public access to improve the connectivity primarily between Twelfth and Seventh, is that what it is?
Yep.
Now, they have shown Twelfth and Seventh, but in their proposal, it's theirs. They build it, they maintain it, they just provide a, some sort of legal document to, you know, give access, but it's not public. Did I get that right?
Yep, so I'll, uh.
So that's the only nuance between their submittal and staff recommendation on what we're voting for.
Yeah, it, it is quite nuanced. And so right now, the plat that's included in your packet does not have any sort of public access easement or any connection between Seventh Avenue and Twelfth Avenue. And so what they're proposing-
Doesn't have any now, right, there's no roads.
Correct.
And it's sandwiched between the Cheyenne River and the-
Ninth drain. Yep, and the drain, yep.
Drain number something.
Twenty-one.
And so it's a, pardon my description, but it's kind of a weird lot. Right?
It's not a square.
It's not a square and it's access top and bottom, what about all the way over to Ninth Street Northwest, is that where they're going to connect? They're going to put a, some, some sort of thing over the drain?
Up in the northwest.
Oh, up in the northwest, it, it doesn't require, the street goes over it there, okay. However, we have had other situations where we have allowed private for a majority of the, because of, in, in unique configurations like the one we were just talking about, the Oak.
Oak condos, yeah.
All that, all the streets in there are all private, right?
The question is if there's a public access easement there? In the Oak condos?
Yeah, maybe just to clarify the, the recommended condition there. You know, based on the West Fargo two point O plan and the desire for street connectivity, additional street connectivity, included in your packet here also is, you know, a little map that shows the, the existing street network in this area, or lack thereof. And so this area, there's not a whole lot of, you know, right of way connections, there is the Cheyenne River on the east side, which is a barrier for transportation. There's a, you know, railroad line a little bit to the south here. There's also the legal drain and then just the general industrial area in general. There's not a whole lot of, you know, street connections in this area, and so this three hundred and forty-two acres is the area, is essentially, you know, the block size, this is the area that you can actually drive around on a, on a street. And so, you know, based on the, the, the need for additional connectivity discussed in the West Fargo two point O plan, the recommendation of staff is to, you know, do something similar to the original proposal. Whether it's a public street or a public access easement, staff doesn't have any, you know, strong concerns either way there. What staff is concerned with is just having the ability for the public to travel through there, an additional means of, of, of transportation through the area. You know, so for instance, if there's ever an incident on, on Ninth Street, and Ninth Street is shut down, or if it's shut down for repair, you know, the ability to detour, you know, through this area, for example, without having to detour two miles out of your way.
So in that case, if it doesn't have a public easement or isn't a public road, the city would not be able to, say, have construction there and divert that traffic?
Yep, and so the applicant is wanting to do private drives and I can let them, you know, speak in more detail on what their proposal is.
Okay.
With the, they're essentially proposing that we come up with some type of a legal agreement to allow the public to use those streets, but to allow them, you know, total control over where those streets are, you know, without having to come back in front of you guys for, you know, any approval to modify any of those or anything like that. Just kind of a, a broad summary, so again, it's a little complex and a little confusing, and so happy to answer any questions.
I think I got it.
Is, excuse me, Seventh Avenue North, is that a public roadway now?
It is.
The old Stockyards Road?
Correct, yep. So it's, right now, it's a, it's a long dead-end street with a cul-de-sac on the end of it.
Okay, that's public right now.
Correct.
Thank you, Aaron. I'm going to open it up for public comment now, sir, if you wish to. Come on up here, state who you are. And we'll try to answer questions.
People in the room that know who I am, that's Mike and Lisa. My name is Wally Tintus and I've been around here for quite a while, as my gray hair shows. I used to own the Stockyards, part of it. I don't remember the year, must be at least thirty years ago. I bought the north, the south half of it, south quarter of it. And it's all been developed, it's all been taken care of properly. So I'm really enthused about this, this is a good idea. And they take, took care of the people on the east side of the Cheyenne, being far enough away. And the lot flats, very good. We need in West Fargo, what they're trying to accomplish, and I have no financial interest in this. Except, I want you to notice that one lot on the left-hand side that protrudes in there. I don't know why that's still protruding in there, because I gave it to a guy a long, long time ago.
I believe of, Aaron, the clarification, that's one of my- I believe, Aaron, the clarification, that's one of my questions I had before. Is it included in there? So it is now, right? So that line?
You asked me about this little, this little piece right here.
That one, yeah. Did you ever get title to it?
So it's our understanding that the owners here can respond to that, but...
Did you get title to it?
Yeah, it's all one lot now.
Okay, okay, okay. Because the two people that were involved are not dead. They were both living yet, so we could accomplish it. Okay. Other than that, what's happening to the manure pile?
Yours.
Because it does not show up on the plat here, and it's quite a part of that. So that's gotta be accomplished. You kind of understand where I'm coming from? Ancient times. Okay, thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir.
But I will be back here as you proceed with this thing because I think it's a good idea.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public, questions? Seeing none, I will close that section.
I have...
Are you the developer?
One of them. I think the...
You are?
Mike Graham, 3030 Cheyenne Riverway, West Fargo. To answer the question on the public easement north and south and why we are trying to pursue forward without putting that in the plot right now is we want to develop this as ongoing, and every time we move a lot line or, you know, shift that thing, we're gonna be back here, and I think that we could be back here fifty times over the next two years. And I, we're open to the idea, and that's where I think Aaron was leading to some language that protects the city and protects us to allow public, you know, easement. But it's, it's super hard, and we're, so we're trying to say, yes, you can do it. We just don't wanna say, here it is, you know.
But it's just one road that we're talking, that connects the two.
If I understand right, you might not align the road exactly north-south. It might be crooked. You just don't know the exact alignment of it yet. And so it's hard for you to dedicate exactly on a plat where the easement is.
Because we'll do that, and we'll...
In pieces.
We'll shift something ten feet, and we'll be back here, and we'll have to vacate the easement, you know, replot. You know, it's gonna be a very lengthy process to move that thing six inches.
So maybe a question for John or Aaron. Do you feel we have, if the property owner is willing to allow a access easement for all the right public reasons, do you feel we have some legal mechanisms or language that we can attach to this that will provide sort of a blanket access throughway whenever that throughway is constructed?
Well, Aaron and I had a chance to talk about this today. I think the best way to accomplish this because we don't precisely know the legal description of where the easement is gonna be. And so we'd accomplish it through a developers' agreement. And then as, and I'm just thinking out loud here because we still gotta work it out, but if they were to have a hundred or a thousand feet of the easement identified, that would slowly come in, you know, linear, in a linear fashion. It would come on, come into play according to the developers' agreement. And the developers' agreement would sort of serve as bookends for what the legal obligations would be regarding access. The other thing I wanted to cover in the developers' agreement, and I'm sure you've all heard it before, like the complaints about the private developments, like Menards, everybody calls the city because there's potholes in those streets, but those are private streets. And so we wanna make clear that whatever agreement's in place, that the property owners, they, they have to figure out a mechanism to charge the property owners to fix it so that it's not the city's issue. If neighborhoods are complaining that the road in there wasn't fixed, they have to fix it. But I think we can accom, the short answer is we can accomplish it through a developers' agreement. It's gonna take some time to work out the language in that development.
And then just to respond from, you know, the planning department's perspective, I think the answer is yeah, you know, we can certainly do lots of things through legal agreements and whatnot. But, you know, it create, it, it is, you know, sometimes a little bit burdensome to customize every single development that comes through with its own, you know, unique legal agreement. You know, the reason the subdivision ordinance exists in the first place is to provide for, you know, the orderly development for the transportation system and whatnot. And so, you know, it kinda, you know, not necessarily defeats the purpose, but it is, in a way, at variance with, you know, the purpose of this subdivision ordinance. And so I, I just wanna point out too, I think, I wanna draw a distinction between desire just for, you know, that, you know, connection for, for the transportation system. So for example, on their site plan here, you know, easement on, on this private drive here for public access, everything internal to the lot, you know, I don't think that staff really cares too much about, you know, there's no, you know, need for public access in there. You know, they can do that on their end. It's just, it's really just the transportation network component that, that staff is interested in.
Aaron, to that point, they have the north, I mean, as drafted anyway, they have the north-south route, and then there's also the exit onto Ninth Street.
Yep.
Is that a concern from your transportation analysis, or just primarily the north-south?
The, the connection on Ninth Street is one that, you know, we'll have to have some additional discussions with our engineering department on. They did, they did express the need for negative access easement, which, which is shown on the plat currently. However, we also have, you know, access spacing in ordinance. And I believe on, you know, depending upon the context and the road classification, I think it's something like 660 feet from, you know, the intersection of 12th Avenue and Ninth Street. And so I think there's just over that, and so there might be space for, you know, one connection on the, kinda, just north of the, kinda where they have it shown almost. But somewhere in this vicinity is where, where that gap might be.
And then maybe one other question. I see on the drawing here, there's some indication of water and sewer lines within the private streets. Would those then become private utilities and maintained by the owner?
Correct.
One other clarification, Aaron, if you don't mind. The way you've written the recommendations, the first line item is the applicant incorporates a street connection or public access easement on the plat. That's the piece in question, correct?
Correct.
And if we keep that in, it's, we have to have a, in, defined in the plat prior to it being plotted. Or the other option, as John has indicated, it's spelled out that some sort of street connection is established and reviewed by the city in the form of a development agreement and managed, manage it that way even though it's not specifically laid out in the plat. Those are the two options we're, we're kind of weighing here, right?
Yeah, and I think even with the, the inclusion of a public access easement on the plat, we still would have, you know, some type of a legal agreement that talks about some of the other concerns, like street maintenance and, you know, if there's potholes, how does the city compel the private owner to fix those potholes, for example?
Is that all incorporated in what would be considered a development agreement? Or is that a separate agreement as well?
I'm thinking for this one, we'll just have a single development agreement just because of the complexity that's involved and the issues just tied all together in a subdivision. Instead of having a subdivision agreement, we're just gonna do one developers' agreement.
Is there, I understand your point about not having all these sort of one-off agreements out there floating around. It's hard to manage, I can, I can imagine, but...
In the developers' agreement, could you, or is it common to include a replat of this when...
It's all done.
When it's all done, so that the road, the public easement, whether it's crooked or wherever that goes, could that just be part of the developers' agreement so that there's a commitment when it's complete, whether that's three years or five years or whenever?
Yeah, so, yeah, because when ownership, or if ownership changes down the road, it's not in some agreement that may get or not get attached to the plat, which is really the biggest...
Right.
...legal document, right?
Yeah, you could commit to having the owner replat. What we've been doing with all the agreements now is recording them on the property, so it would...
It is connected?
Hold the property, the developers' agreement will stay with it.
And then from a, you know, planning perspective too, I think, you know, we can certainly do that. But then, at the end of the day, you know, it's ultimately up to the developer to dictate where that road goes, how it, you know, winds or not winds through the development. You know, after it's all said and done, there wouldn't be any opportunity for you all to review that alignment, for example.
Yeah, but I mean, it, it's gonna be to the city's standard requirements, you know, and so...
Well, not necessarily.
Aaron seems uncomfortable with that. He's squirming.
You might need to define, you know, city standards.
Yeah, I guess, just to that point, if this is a private street, I don't expect that the street is built to city standards. It's just the city wants an access agreement through there for transportation purposes, emergency vehicles, all the usual things. But it's not, the street wouldn't be designed to a city standard. It would be, maybe narrower if they only need narrower street.
Well, couldn't it be? I mean, we, I recall us requiring that in the Oak one was that the streets that were put in were built to those, the requirements as far as the construction, as well as the, you know, overall... I, maybe I'm wrong.
It was a public easement, that was a public, those are public utilities. That's maybe the difference there.
Could be, could be. So everything, even the stuff underground is private?
Yeah, and here, I think, trying to do is, you know, get away from special assessments.
Yep.
So there's, it's unique, but I feel like I've sat in here many times, and there's a bunch of people that say, we don't want any more special assessments. So then we're going at this in private, you know, we'll flip the bill. And now I feel like we're doing it, and now we're maybe uneasy about that too. So it's like, we're stuck in this middle, like, don't know what to do, you know?
It's not that we don't trust you.
Well, no, I...
No, but that, that's a part of the thing because I believe, you know, part of the concern is three, four years down the road, or, you know, as these decisions are made, you know, in chunks, it becomes, the end result is suboptimal for, you know, the traffic flow or the accessibility. So, you know, that, I, I see both sides really as far as what, what makes the most sense. I mean, we, nobody's opposing the development. We all wanna make sure that the opportunity is there. The big chunk of land that the city would love to, the whole community would love to have developed. Question is, how do we do it without being burdensome from a application perspective, to your point? But then at the same time, still have oversight and input into the final solution? I mean... Jeez.
Well, are we in agreement that we think we would approve this with this public connectivity? I mean, can we agree to that and then figure out how you carry it out? It's, those are two different questions in my mind. One is if we are in favor of it, and then the second is, how do you accomplish it?
Well, specifically, this first point on the recommendation...
Right.
As written, would be, hey, they have to plot public access now at the very beginning and nail that down, and should they wish to move it, then every deviation would require another replat, which is an expense...
Right, and that's what I...
...and administrative thing. So the way this is written is, hey, you're gonna have to spell it out. Question is, do we want to have some more flexible mechanism such as a development agreement?
I get that.
Which... All right, well, I, I've lost my place here. Have I closed the public comment section? I have not. Any other comments right now? I'll close that. Good conversation, though. All right, so we have to choose a direction we wanna go. Flexible or to the book, kind of?
Well, I guess it seems to me, and if I understand it right from John and Aaron, that there's gonna be a developers' agreement regardless. And those developers' agreements get recorded. It's maybe not the ideal mechanism to spell out, you know, some access provisions and easements and whatnot. But, and, I mean, I think, I think we would all agree that, you know, this plan looks to be a lot better for this parcel than its current state. And so we should be encouraging development of that. And I suspect the market will continue to demand these types of industrial condos, if you will. And so it seems to me a good application for it. But given all the uncertainties in the world, I can see where maybe it's a bit fluid as to how this gets fully developed, so... So I guess from, from my standpoint, I, I think having that public access connectivity is important, and we should, we should require that. But I think requiring it via a developers' agreement would be satisfactory from my standpoint. And sorry, Aaron, if I'm stepping on your toes, but I think that would be satisfactory. And with that, I guess I would maybe suggest amending the recommendation that the public access agreement be defined via a developers' agreement or the plat.
Well, that's, which is it? You wanna put it on the plat as spelled out here, or you want to amend it to...
I'm saying, okay.
Street connection is defined in a development agreement.
Yeah, I think, I think by a development agreement is fine. I mean, if it gets to be developed on the plat, I'm supportive of that too. But I think for the developer, developer agreement.
Okay, is that, is that a motion?
That was my motion.
All right, so could you help me with the amendment that you're asking for the recommendation number one? That the applicant incorporates a street connection, defines a street connection...
Or public access easement.
Via...
In a developers' agreement.
With the city.
Rather than on the plat, so take out on the plat and remove...
Okay.
Does that include specifically a connection between Seventh and 12th?
The only thing I would remove here is on the plat and replace it with in a developers' agreement with the city.
So it would be a Seventh to 12th, because I do believe we need connectivity. And how we get to that, I understand the flexibility is very important. You know, they could have some big manufacturing plant that wants to take the whole site. We might still want a road there, but it would change, like you say, how they might develop.
And our legal counsel says it's doable in that format.
Yeah, it's gonna take some time to draft the agreement, but I think we can make it work.
Correct.
I'm not ready to second it, so if you wanna second it, I have some questions and comments. But so if somebody wants to second it...
I'll second it, and then you can follow up with questions.
All right, it's removed and seconded to approve with the amendment to the first that taking out on the plat and putting in, in the form of a development agreement? Questions, discussion for her?
Here's my question. It's not clear to me that, that this specifies the type of connectivity. What kind of road is it? Just simply a utility access? Or is it literally for the public, which is what all of the reference to 2.0 is about? Is that the public needs this kind of opportunity for walkability and connection and driving and so forth? Two different types of things here, and I've just been burned by PUD, so I'm careful here that I know for sure what we're saying. Which do we, are we allowing that up to the development agreement? Which kind of connectivity? The second thing is how it's paid for. That was the issue about special assessments. Is this put back on to those who are buying the land, etc.?
That's clear, they're gonna build it, and it's not a special, it's all private.
Okay, so bringing up the specials was simply a way to indicate, I don't know what. So it is going to be paid for privately?
By them building it and owning it, yes.
Then maintaining it. So you, if you have a utility access, it's quite a different maintenance and cost than if it's a road that does meet public street standards.
This, my understanding is this is a private road that they will allow the public to travel across.
Aaron, is that kind of how you saw it? Because that's not what I thought of when, as you presented this, but maybe I'm misunderstood.
Yeah, and maybe, just to clarify some of the nomenclature here, the words we're using. So, you know, there's a difference between, you know... So, um, you know, there's a difference between, you know, when you say public street standards, you can think of the typical street that you see out here with curb gutter, sidewalk, street trees, all that, street lights. Those are all part of our, you know, street standards. Um, in this case, what we're talking about is, is really more of a private drive, which is to say, it's, it's probably just a section of, you know, concrete or asphalt, you know, um, at least, at least as wide as the, you know, fire code requires for minimum, uh, drive width for, for fire truck apparatus. Uh, with, you know, no, not necessarily any street, or excuse me, no, you know, curb gutter necessarily, no sidewalks, no street lights, no trees. It's just something to drive on.
Okay, and then back to your comment about, um, maintenance. How does one ensure that, uh, the, a kind of, a private road is maintained to some kind of standards? If it's really not even a public street meeting our standards?
So, we've actually gotten fairly sophisticated when developers propose those types of agreements. Typically, it's contained within the easement that it requires each of the property owners to pay for the maintenance pro rata. And it re, it has a mechanism in there in that if nobody's acting and the city gives them notice, uh, that they would have a certain amount of time to fix it, and if they don't, the city could come in and fix it and assess all the property owners according to that format.
Okay.
That still all needs to be worked out.
But it is possible to put that into the Alright, thank you, that does answer my question.
We've learned a lot from our experiences with, like, the Menards properties, and, and Menards is a great company, I'm not, not, just, that was an example of a street where we have comments from the public that, well, the city should really go in and fix it, well, it's not a city street.
Okay.
Is the naming still the same on private roadways? In other words, um, I think for a time there we had, we were calling them ways or something like that to differentiate for the public, so they know it's not a public street. Like, we aren't gonna name that, whatever it'd be Seventh Street West or whatever. Is that, is that correct? I, I just think it's important to note that people should understand. I think most people don't understand Menards, that roadway in front is owned by Menards and/or those properties there. Like I said, I know we get a lot of calls on maintenance and stuff like that. And I, I know we had discussed it over the years, anytime there's a private road, it's gotta be designated somehow or signed somehow so that people understand it's not a, a city property and the city gets all the calls. And I, that's probably something that he could include in his development agreement or something to that effect, but if I'm correct, I, I don't think those are gonna be proper street names, is that correct, or am I wrong?
In conversations with the applicant, uh, the, the conversation of addressing and street naming came up. They indicated they, they don't have any intention of naming the street, or the, the drive. But we do have address standard, standards that, exactly what you said, if it is a named private drive, there is certain identifiers like way, uh, that would be used. And so without, you know, if there is, if there is the intention to name the private drive, ideally that would be shown on the plat, that's typically how streets are named. You know, we could certainly look into, I don't know, John, if you have enough off your head on alternative ways to name a private drive, but.
I don't, we, we have, it's something like, it's part of the list of a whole bunch of stuff that we gotta figure out in the agreement.
Yeah, I, I just think we have to designate, so again, it, it's wonderful if they're gonna build their own and, and hopefully do them at a high standard, which I would hope they would for the benefit of their, uh, people are buying out there in developments, but, uh, just so the general public knows, it's, it's their own private streets.
Okay. So, any other questions or discussion required before vote? Alright, it's been moved and seconded to approve the application with the first recommendation being amended, all, with the six app recommendations, with the first one being amended to, uh, to replace on the plat with, uh, in, in a, um, development agreement?
With the city.
With the city. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? The application is approved. Alright, there's non-agenda items, there's a Western Planner Conference to be held September thirteenth, sixteenth in Bismarck. That's also the day we have our meeting for the training. So if you go to the training, we have a meeting that day, I believe.
I didn't know that.
Is this the?
When I looked on the calendar, I think it was.
New commissioner training, because I, I think I did this at one point, probably a Zoom thing. Is it the same, do you have any idea?
I'm not sure if it's the same or not, to be honest.
Okay, they change it every year, or is this, this isn't just for new commissioner?
Continuing education so we get smarter?
Yeah, it's, it's part of the conference, so, uh, Western Planners is kind of a regional chapter of the National Planning Association, American Planning Association, I should say. Um, and this, the, the conference jumps around from state to state, from year to year, and, and this year it's actually in North Dakota. And so, the North Dakota Planning Association is, uh, kinda combining forces with you, if you will, with, uh, Western Planners to put on a, a regional planning conference, and so if you're interested, um, you can reach out to staff, uh, you know, we, we might have some, you know.
But it is the same week as our meeting here.
We didn't look at that when we threw it on the agenda here, but that's something we'll look at.
I believe.
Staff won't be here then.
We, we wanted to make you aware of it early on, so.
So, either, um, I mean, that's a few months out, if we need to make an adjustment to the this meeting, uh, for that month.
I think we'll see, you know, if, if staff are interested in attending and, and how that shakes out.
I, I actually was kind of interested in the training, at least, uh, possibly.
So we, if we, if we have a lot of interest, we can certainly look at adjusting our meeting schedule if we need to.
Okay.
So, if you are interested, just reach out to us, and, uh, we might have a little funding available for commissioners to, to attend that, so.
Any other non-agenda items?
I do wanna raise the issue that seems to me requires further discussion. And that is the fact that we do have a lighted sign now on Fortieth and Fourth. After having just disapproved a request to have a lighted sign. Uh, what's going to happen with that?
I hope they turn the light off.
Well, uh, uh, somebody's gonna have to find them, somebody's gonna have to do something because they did not ask for a conditional use permit, so, um,
Well, for clarification, they did, uh, put the application in. And when they went for the permit, it did indicate it was gonna be illuminated, which was then permitted still. There was, so, they are not in violation of the permit which they have submitted, even though.
So there was a problem with the permit that was given to them, not by us, but somewhere else, so we need to?
Well, the, the city.
The city, exactly, so we need to take a look at that.
So we gotta be careful there, I think, as far as, we, we can't find him for something we just gave him a permit for.
Yeah.
Right?
Right, there, there's a doctrine that holds that even, even if a city makes a mistake in the issuance of a permit, like, if you think about it, if somebody goes to build a house and you give them a building permit, they build the house, and then all of a sudden you say, well, wait a minute, it didn't, it violates the zoning ordinance. Their defense is, hey, you gave me a building permit, I'm not tearing down the house.
Right.
And the North Dakota Supreme Court has consistently upheld that right. It, in this case, they submitted a permit application, it was approved. It probably shouldn't have been approved, but it was approved, so we're sort of, you know, it's one of those cases that, the old saying that the horse is out of the barn, the horse is in the barn here.
And part of that also is, is my reading of this commercial office park district is that this is not a permitted use to have this retail food and beverage business there. So we have a problem with granting permits, it seems to me, building permits. We're gonna have this same problem happen on Fortieth and Fourth, where we have a, we'll build a suit in that PUD that we approved. And are we gonna have retail businesses in there that get approved when they come for a building permit? And yet that is not a, uh, those are not permitted uses under four twenty-seven A. So, I'm wondering about the discussion that we need to have about the building permits that are given uh, after we have made some decisions here. Maybe there were, again, that was probably just some error, but giving a building permit to a retail food and beverage business for this commercial office park, either I really misunderstand what this ordinance is, uh, and I need to be corrected, or we need to make sure we're not giving building permits to the wrong type of business for these.
My understanding is Juice Box is not necessarily retail, and so I don't know, John, if maybe you can look into see whether there's a ruling of applicability or not.
Yeah, we, we can certainly look into it, what I would say is that in the last, uh, year, we have made uh, substantial changes to the way that building permits are handled and processed in the city. Uh, it goes through a different layer, levels of approval than it did before, because unfortunately, this issue was not necessarily repeated in sign by, sign code violations, but we had other issues in which building permits were issued for minor things that probably weren't in conformance with the code. And so the city staff, under the direction of the city administrator, uh, we've made significant changes to how the building permits are reviewed and approved. And I think that we've got a pretty good system in place now where that won't happen. Um, the engineering department has been fantastic on the engineering side to make sure that we're, we're not running into the engineering issues, and I think we're getting more integrated approach with the planning and zoning and building permits.
That's good to hear. Um, one last thing about Juice Box and their flags. Uh, is my, again, my reading of the kind of, um, reliance on promotion, uh, this doesn't fly under the commercial office park, uh, ordinance. Do we have any mechanism for asking them to remove those flags?
It's probably under the sign code, as far as a temporary sign. Um, there's limitations on how long you can put up a temporary sign.
So those are considered temporary signs to have those?
Right.
Okay.
So we could contact code enforcement, we can check the ordinance and contact code enforcement and, and, um, there's a process where they note when the sign is up and how long it's been up and send a letter to, to the owner and indicate that they've, they need to remove it because it's been up too long.
That would help it to remove that, I think. And did you ask, Mr. Shockley, you're gonna take a look at whether they're, they're actually retail, I believe I did see that they are selling to the public to walk in and buy. And that is retail to me, maybe I'm misunderstanding what retail is, and my understanding is this is not for retail business. This is commercial office park. So I don't wanna see retail at Fortieth and Seventh because, um, somehow we let that slip through because we had different understandings of what this ordinance is.
We, we, we can take a look at, I don't know much about the actual business, so we can take a look at it.
Thank you very much.
Any other non-agenda items?
How do we have an agenda item under the non-agenda items?
You know, it's, uh, it's a technicality, but it works. Anything else you wanna cover? I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Moving seconded to adjourn, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Wait. That's official.
That was decisive.
Thanks for bringing the, uh, I didn't print it out, I was, I read through it, I was like, oh, jeez.
I appreciate that your recollection was.